Good evening, welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting of Monday, January 23rd, 2025, opening the meeting at 6:01 in the Multi Service Center, Room 520. And the meeting is available online. If you go to the Planning Board website, you can get the information of how to get to the meeting. So first order of business, I'd like to, well, we've opened the meeting, I'd like to take a roll call.
Mike Baptiste here.
Julie Marianne here.
Sam Corbett here.
And Jane Gleason here.
Is Carl Schultz on?
No.
Okay. Okay. So our Chair Carl Schultz Schultz is not, we believe will not be attending, and he is somewhere in the Midwest. So I'm going to, if I could, make a motion to ask Jane Gleason, who is our Vice Chair, to serve as Chair this evening, if I have a second. All in favor?
Aye. Mike Baptiste aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Jane Gleason acting as Chair, aye.
Congratulations.
Thanks. And I'd like to, if someone would make a motion to make Julie the Vice Chair for the evening.
The current Secretary.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Rebecca, do that for me. Better do a, you better do a second, my.
Really?
I second myself.
All those in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason as Chair, aye. So the first item on the agenda is to approve the meeting minutes of June 9th. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look them over. I think they were sent out a little while ago, and there were a couple of errors in it that I had corrected.
Motion to accept.
Second?
You have a second?
Yep.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Mike Baptiste aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. Moving on to the next order of preliminary business, we've got Planning Board Project Number 5-25, which is Plan 25-6 for Donna Truran Revocable Trust. It's an ANR at 155 Glen Charlie Road. Good evening, if you could state your name and spell it so that our scrivener can get it spelled correctly in the minutes.
Mark Truran.
Rob Berman. B-R-A-M-A-N.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, the property is located at 155 Glen Charlie Road, Assessor's Map 129, Lot 1018. Some of us would remember it as being the Blueberry Patch property that the Trurans own. The intent is to divide Lot 1018 into three lots.
Is your microphone on? Did you just put your microphone on?
Hello?
It is, it's just the AC sort of.
Okay, there we go. So the intent is to divide Lot 1018 into three lots. One proposed lot, 1018A, consists of a single-family home, septic system, and it has the required frontage area, contiguous upland, and shape factor. The proposed lots 1018B and 1018C are not to be considered separate building lots, and they actually have conservation restrictions on them. So if you have any questions?
Josh, is there a specific note? Okay, I see it here. Is that the language that we need?
Unbuildable.
It's okay? It's the right language?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm sure we've got the language on there, but it's not buildable?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Is the existing path, it's just a walking path?
Oh, yeah.
With the unbuildable lots, it looks like?
Yeah, okay.
Motion to accept.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Jane Gleason as Chair, aye. So you're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the Mylars, we could sign them.
Yes, you do. I left Mylars with the Planning Board Office.
Yeah, we've got the Mylars, so we could sign those right now.
Okay, thank you. You doing, Mike?
The few blueberries, some part, the edge of the park is out near the edge of the woods. Get, you know, leaf nourishment, you know.
I'll need a data. I told you that was dinner.
Yeah.
I'll give this to them, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Stay cool.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, moving right along. Next item is Planning Board Project 7-25, or Plan 25-7 for Jake Pilad, an ANR at 28 Indian Neck Road. And state your name and spell it for our scrivener.
Good evening, Brad Bertolo with J.C. Engineering, B-R-A-D, B-E-R-T-O-L-O.
Thank you. Floor is yours.
Thank you. This project is located at 28 Indian Neck Road. The lot itself is approximately eight acres, contains an existing single-family dwelling. A majority of the lot has some wetlands on the property, and the property owners wish to create a large parcel in the back which will be conveyed to and abut her, and maintain the house on a buildable lot in the front of the property. This lot is currently in the MR30 zoning district, has the capability of a single-family dwelling or multiple units. We are requesting, as part of this project, a waiver from the lot shape factor. We do fit the lot shape factor on the property. It does just stick into the wetland. I think the lot as a whole obviously predates the shape factor requirements of the zoning bylaw, and creating this new lot would not take away from any of the space that would be, that would allow for, you know, a development of a two-family, if they choose to. They may just keep the existing house. The lot itself in the back is six acres, the front piece is just under two acres, 1.8 acres. MR30 requires 30,000 square feet for one family, 45,000 square feet for two-family. The 45,000 square foot would require 80% of that as uplands to classify for two-family, and we do have just under 41,000, so we meet that requirement. And we do have a note on plan, that parcel 1017B, item number nine, is unbuildable under the current configuration.
It's the note here, yeah.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Can you tell me, is that a culvert on the existing gravel driveway that the?
Yeah, there is, there is like a drainage-type ditch that runs across the driveway, and then it.
Yeah, there's a, it almost looks like a building in the middle of the driveway.
No, yeah.
Okay.
Do you make sure you're speaking into your mic, Jane?
Oh, sorry.
It looks like Lot 26 is owned by another party.
Yeah, yeah, separate entity, yes.
Yeah, no reformer, okay.
That is the lot that anticipated purchasing the back.
I was gonna ask that, it's not really, it's not really pertinent, but.
Yeah, yeah.
And the one thing I noticed is that it doesn't really get them their frontage, but it gives them.
It's a pre-existing lot, so.
So it's okay, but it gives them a whole lot more.
Are you unmuted, Jane?
Sorry. Sorry. Anybody have any questions? Sam, Mike?
Lot of wetlands.
Yeah.
Is there no block over there to the, you see all the old ditches in there?
A lot of it's Blueberry Patch, old Blueberry Patch in that area, it's now wetlands, adjacent to it, south of the ditch. I don't know what was to the north of it.
Those blueberries, no, those are high. There was blueberry bushes, there was a lot of blueberry patches around in the olden days, which are all gone now.
So we're looking for a second, I guess. Sam made a motion to approve.
Mike Baptiste, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
More questions?
Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Thank you.
And we have a Mylar for this as well, given the area.
Mylar, especially, yeah. It's Carl Maran. It's Carl Maran. What do you do if they don't have Carl?
Yes, why don't you give him to us? That's an extra.
Didn't clearly have, he was, every of those, we used to go around, we tried to get the sun, we skipped.
Okay, be next.
We skipped, we skipped.
There you go. Thank you. Next item. This is done. So I'm going to take the public hearing out of order for PB 4.5, Plan 25.5, 25-5. Where did that 4.25 come from?
Right here.
Yeah, but that's not a Planning Board number. Josh, can you weigh in on that?
I'm not sure. Probably meant to be a dash, but.
Oh, 4-25?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what threw me.
Following day.
Yeah, a typo.
Yes, 4-25.
Yeah, so I actually need that, because I need to, I need to open. So we need to open the public hearing, and then we will vote on the continuance that they requested, so that we can sort of put this aside and move on to our, the main event, so to speak. So, notice of public hearing, Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 23rd, 2025, at 6:00 PM in Room 520 of Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571, to consider petition number 4-25 for a site plan review from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320, and Article 15, Section 1520 of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Kevin Welch of 651 Orchard Street, Unit 308A, New Bedford, Massachusetts, 02744, proposing construction of two industrial buildings for storage of materials, tools, and a base from which to conduct their local commercial businesses with associated site work, including utilities, access, and parking, located at 2731 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Massachusetts, Assessor's Map 133, Lot 1003, in the MR30 zoning district. So we will open the hearing.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Okay.
So that the hearing is open, and now we need to vote to continue, we received a continuance request, it was rather at a late hour, but it was something that I prompted, so.
Late?
Mm-hmm.
Forward, forward to the end.
In writing, however.
In writing?
Yes.
So they've asked to be continued to the July 7, 2025, meeting. Do I have a second for that, or a motion for that?
Motion to approve continuance to July 7, 2025.
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So we will put them on the agenda for our meeting on.
Great.
July 7th.
Yep. Add that to the pile.
Okay. So our next item is Planning Board Number 10-24, Wareham MA3 LLC, Site Plan Review, Special Permit 91 and 101, Farring Hill Road, and we are, this evening, going to vote the hearing, the public hearing has been closed, it was closed at the June 9 meeting, and we are here this evening to go through the findings of fact and take a vote on the project. So, I think what I'd like to do is, the findings of fact are broken down into sections that are lettered, and if we could vote on the findings of fact according to, like, in bulk of.
Yeah, separately.
Under the big headers, that would be good, rather than, and waive the reading of the whole thing into the, do we need to vote on waiving, reading the whole thing?
No.
No, I think so.
So, the first section is the project summary, and it goes through and just talks about, it summarizes what the project is about. So, are there any questions?
Any questions? One thing that I did want to mention, we, in our last review, there were some typographical errors, some small, minor corrections, there was a couple of bits of data missing that are in the record, so we're going to reserve the right to insert those, but otherwise, I think we're 30 pages later.
Okay.
Do you want a motion on A?
So I'd like a motion on A. Yes.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the next section is, oh, oh, me.
I move that the Board delegate the authority to Member Moran and to Mr. Farady to make any clerical corrections required.
Sorry, we couldn't hear that.
I move, how's that?
Did your microphone?
No, I turned it off. The, I move that Member Moran and Mr. Farady be authorized to make clerical corrections to any typographical errors in the proposed findings of fact.
Okay, second?
So moved, and then second.
Yep, second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason as Chair, aye, and I voted aye on that last vote, too.
Jane, I apologize.
Public hearing is closed, sir.
Could I just ask who made the motion? Julie.
Julie.
I did.
Oh, I didn't recognize you as a member of the Board.
I'm sorry, I should introduce.
You've got a keen eye, sir. Public hearing is closed.
I need to introduce, we have Town Council with us here this evening, Mr. Rich Bowen, and, anyway, moving along. On Item B, did we vote on that already? No, okay. So I'm looking for a motion on Item B, description.
Any discussion, questions?
Sorry.
Yes, it's okay. Discussions, questions? No.
Any questions on Section B?
Time to description of project and site. No?
No.
Make a motion to accept Section B.
Second?
All in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. And the next one is Section C, which is Site Plan Review, Special Permit. Any questions?
Discussion?
Okay. Entertain a motion to accept.
Accept Section C.
Second?
Yep. All in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. The next section is Section D, Solar Panels, Nano Materials and Coatings Risks. Any questions or discussion?
Make a motion to accept Section D.
Second?
Yep. All in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason as Chair, aye, and I voted aye on that last vote, too.
Jane, I apologize.
Public hearing is closed, sir.
Could I just ask who made the motion? Julie.
Julie.
I did.
Oh, I didn't recognize you as a member of the Board.
I'm sorry, I should introduce.
You've got a keen eye, sir. Public hearing is closed.
I need to introduce, we have Town Council with us here this evening, Mr. Rich Bowen, and, anyway, moving along. On Item B, did we vote on that already? No, okay. So I'm looking for a motion on Item B, description.
Any discussion, questions?
Sorry.
Yes, it's okay. Discussions, questions? No.
Any questions on Section B?
Time to description of project and site. No?
No.
Make a motion to accept Section B.
Second?
All in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. And the next one is Section C, which is Site Plan Review, Special Permit. Any questions?
Discussion? Okay.
Entertain a motion to accept.
Accept Section C.
Second?
Yep. All in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Solar panels.
And the next section is Section D, Solar Panels, Nano Materials and Coatings Risks. Any questions or discussion?
Make a motion to accept Section D.
Second?
Before we call, ask for a discussion, and if nobody wishes to discuss it, then call, so to say, we can remove the second if any discussion, if there's silence, then take you down.
Okay. So it has been moved in, or motioned and seconded, so, any discussion? No. All in favor? Mike?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. The next section is Battery Energy Storage System. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions?
Make a motion to accept that section.
And a second? And a second?
A second?
And any discussion?
We still don't know what they're going to use for batteries, right?
Correct.
I think that's right.
Mm-hmm. Vote?
Yeah, do we, you ready to vote? No? No?
No. Got a question. We don't know what they're using, so how can we clearly vote on it? You know, it's up in the air. I think we were told that, it all depends what's available at the time, you know, technology's changing all the time, and how can we put forward a clear conscience?
Here's a good point.
So the findings of fact, at the beginning of it, it says that there's a lack of detail.
Reflects that, yeah.
It reflects that there's.
That's okay, Rich? Madam Chairman, why don't you just go, since this seems to be a point of some contention, why don't you just go through the points under E, so that everybody has a sense of what's being discussed?
Okay, I can actually, yeah. So I think I should probably just read it. There's F. There's F, okay. So, under E, Battery Energy Storage System, 1, the applicant's submitted material lacked critical details about the Battery Energy Storage System, BES, in all caps, including manufacturer specifications and UL 9540A, fire test reports for the proposed lithium batteries, B, evidence of a gas detection system to monitor hydrogen fluoride, HF, or other toxic gases during thermal runaway, C, validation.
Is this per council request?
Yes.
Okay.
Validation of the emergency shutdown systems compatibility with Wareham Fire Department protocols, 2, as citizens Sherry Cork and Norma Skoggins observed in written comments submitted, quote, "There's no information on the type of battery storage proposed to be used, chemistry, manufacturer, capacity, and any other detail," end parentheses, "or how it will be operated, maintained, and achieve compliance with relevant governing authority. The BES system is situated on the hillside where the project is located. There is no information on how a BES accident would or could affect the residents downhill from the site, or downwind from the site, or wetlands receiving flows from the site," end quote. Item 3, the Fire Department's July 2021 letter explicitly requires compliance with NFPA 855, Section 4.4, Hazard Mitigation Analysis, and Section 53.3.10, Smoke Detection, which remain unaddressed in the applicant's latest submission. NFP 855, Section 4.4, Hazard Mitigation Analysis, HMA, summary provides, 4.4, Hazard Mitigation Analysis, HMA, 4.4.1, Hazard Mitigation Analysis, HMA, shall be provided to the authority having jurisdiction, AHJ, for review and approval when any of the following conditions are met. Bullet 1, technologies not specifically addressed in Table 1.3 are provided. Bullet 2, more than one ESS technology is provided in a single fire area where adverse interaction is possible. Bullet 3, when used to justify increasing the maximum stored energy as per Sections 9.4.1.1 and 9.4.1.2. Bullet Item 4, when required by the AHJ to address a hazard not covered by existing requirements. Bullet 5, for existing lithium ion ESS systems that are not UL 9540 listed, Section 9.2.2.1. And Bullet Item 6, for outdoor lithium ion battery systems per Section 9.5.2.1. Item 4.4.2, Failure Modes, 4.4.2.1, the HMA must evaluate the consequences of these failure modes. Bullet Item 1, Thermal Runaway or Mechanical Failure in a Single ESS Unit. Bullet Item 2, Failure of the Emergency Storage or Protection System Not Addressed in the Product Listing, FMEA. Bullet Item 3, Failure of Protection Systems Such As HVAC Ventilation, Smoke, Fire, Gas Detection, or Suppression. Item 4.4.2.2, Only Single Failure Modes are to be considered per scenario. Item 4.4.3, AHJ Determination, the AHJ may approve the HMA as proof of safety if the analysis demonstrates. Bullet Item 1, Fire Contamination Within Unoccupied ESS Rooms For The Required Fire, excuse me, Fire Resistance Duration, Section 9.
I think it's Containment. You said, you didn't say Containment, Fire Containment.
Oh, Fire Containment, sorry about that. Section 9.6.4. Bullet Item 2, Safe Occupation, Occupant Evacuation Is Not Hindered By Fire or Smoke. Bullet Item 3, Explosion Hazards Are Mitigated Using Control Systems. Item 4.4.4, Documentation, The Completed HMA Must Be Made Available To The AHJ And All Authorized Design And Operational Personnel. Item 4.4.5, Construction And Maintenance, All Systems Required For Compliance Must Be Installed, Tested, And Maintained Per NFPA 855 And Manufacturer Guidelines. Comments In A Letter From The Wareham Planning Board To Secretary Tepper, Executive Office Of Energy And Environmental Affairs, Dated March 4, 2024, Concerning Another Large Ground-Mounted Solar Development In Wareham, Under DEP Review. Some Comments Of The Planning Board Have Relevance To The Farring Hill Project, Including Concerns Raised As To The Various Risks Of BES Systems To Adjoining Properties And The Community. The BES system, although its characteristic. Some comments of the planning board have relevance to the Farring Hill project, including concerns raised as to the various risks of BES systems to adjoining properties and the community. The BES system, although its characteristics the applicant has failed to share, could most likely be the equivalent of a small power plant with the risk of mechanical failure of components, leaching of the BES components as it ages or is damaged, as well as thermal runaway and other fire safety that have been reported nationally and internationally in recent years, and accordingly, the potential environmental risk to the neighborhood is real. Ms. Cork further stated the following. In Professor Milosz Piotrowski's statements in Borrego Solar Systems case presented to the planning board on January 8, 2024, at 13:24, Professor Piotrowski stated as follows, "BES facilities are subject to thermal runaway," which he explained in detail, "a fire resulting from thermal runaway is not easily extinguished. To assess the safety of BES facilities, it is essential to understand the type of battery being used and to review the documentation required for proper maintenance as well as an emergency response plan. Without this essential information, which was lacking in this case, it is not possible to make a determiner as to safety." Risks associated with BES with lithium ion batteries have been associated with numerous accidents as shown in the attached database compiled by the Electric Power Research Institute. According to a database maintained by the Electric Power Research Institute, EPRI, there have been a number of lithium ion battery storage accidents, i.e. fires, around the world, including in the United States. These are reported incidents, and there is no guarantee that all incidents are reported. Research into the database on the question of root cause has revealed that if the cause of the accident is known, 29% of the accidents are caused by operation, 21% are a result of design, 14% as a result of manufacturing issues, and 36% due to integration, assembly, and construction. However, approximately 55% are of unknown origin. Thermal runaway and BES accidents are a possibility. Their origins are not understood, and they pose a risk to health, safety, and welfare. In addition to the presence of BES on the site, consideration should be given to the potential impact of an accident on the water resources of the area. If water is used by firefighters to extinguish a blaze resulting from thermal runaway, for example, and conditions require the use of water to extinguish it, firewater runoff has contaminants that pose a threat to nearby residents, their wells, and wetlands. As found in a recent paper studying the use of water in extinguishing battery fires, firewater runoff can be harmful to the environment. Summary, the details disclosed in the application by the applicant for the BES, including but not limited to the lack of specificity as to its type, size, components, chemical composition, are inadequate, pose safety risks which are not addressed by the applicant, and are inconsistent with protecting the public health, safety, or welfare of the town as provided in chapter 40A, section 3, and articles 1, 14, and 15 of the zoning bylaws.
Madam Chairman, since the planning board is the finder of fact in this matter, I'd suggest that it consider a motion to find that the evidence cited in what you just read is either credible, not credible, credible in part, and identify which parts are credible, not credible, identify the parts which aren't credible. So, a motion, hypothetical motion. I move to find that the evidence recited in section E is credible, or I move to find that the evidence cited in section E is not credible, or I move to find that this is credible and that isn't. So, you, as the finder of fact, you get to pick.
Motion?
You don't even want to look at me.
Shh, shh, shh. I'll make a motion. A motion to find that the facts listed in this section are credible.
Looking for a second. All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, yes, discussion.
Well, if we vote in favor, so in other words, we're saying it's okay.
With your permission, Madam Chairman.
I don't think that we're saying it's okay. I think we're saying that the evidence that is written here as findings of fact is credible.
Exactly.
Okay. Is that an aye?
Julie Moran, aye.
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. Item F, public hearing. Any questions on that? It's very brief.
On F?
Yeah.
I got a question on this, maybe, maybe I missed it. We've been on this thing for so long. This thing was initially put in in '22, I believe. So, of course, we're going to the old standards of the rules and regs. The last submission was not that long ago. Doesn't the new rules apply to that now? Why are we still referring to the old rules?
Because it was-
It was without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
It was reapplied as a new application.
Correct.
Right? So a new application should be from the new date.
I don't know what you, I'm sorry.
It's what it was applied for.
So what? It's dated August of 2024.
Right.
In October.
So that's the new rules and regulations. We shouldn't be even talking about the old rules and regulations.
So with the-
Are we talking about the zoning freeze, or are you talking about the new rules and regulations?
What happened, not talking about that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you haven't arrived at that question yet.
Yes.
So, eat an elephant one bite at a time.
Yeah.
I know. So, is it your recommendation that we should list all of the hearings from the first application?
All this, all this says is that a public hearing on the resubmitted application opened on November 25th and so on. So the only question is whether that statement is factually correct. It doesn't refer to the earlier application or-
Correct.
Earlier hearing dates.
Does, although in the findings of fact, it does discuss the dates of the original application, the resubmitted application, and the reasons why they were withdrawn, but right, it doesn't list the hearings.
Not here.
Correct.
Correct.
Although the findings of fact earlier, it does talk about, you know, what happened, but not the hearings.
So you've covered it.
Yes, it's an explanation of why our applicant had asked for it to be withdrawn.
Counselor, is it-
I guess it, no, I don't feel comfortable with that.
So, is it the thought to amend the, this section to include a recitation of the hearings of the submitted and withdrawn applications? Is that your thought, Mike?
We could do that. Yeah, we could do that, yeah. Monster record in the-
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
I move to authorize Josh to amend this section to include reference to the earlier submittal and earlier hearing, including hearing dates. All someone has to say is so moved.
May I, may I add some commentary on that? If you go back to item A, the project summary, on the second page of that, it lists the dates under item one, site plan review application, and lists the dates of the applications that were filed, and why, when they were withdrawn, and the reasons stated for why they were withdrawn.
True.
So, that information is in there. The thing that's not in there is the hearing dates of the previous projects, because this was really about Project 1024. So that was why we, he, in this section F, only listed the dates of the hearings for 1024.
With your permission, Madam Chairman, I agree with you. And I believe that was the intent of the drafting, but I think to provide Mike with a comfort level, it might be appropriate to make the amendment. If that's all right.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think I may have understood Mr. Baptiste's question a little differently.
I think it was two-part.
Okay. Mike, you had asked why we are working under an old zoning bylaw instead of the current one?
Right.
You guys had approved a definitive subdivision plan under that bylaw, which essentially put them in a zoning freeze. So they, they are heard under that, the zoning bylaw at that time, which was-
And I believe-
It's, it's referenced in-
March 28th of 2022.
It's actually referenced right on the front page under zoning freeze, the project summary.
Right.
It lists the preliminary subdivision plan and the definitive subdivision plan and the dates that those were approved.
There's no harm in that.
Yeah. No, it was, it was a good question.
Well, I just feel uncomfortable because I think that's a deceptive way of doing business. Withdraw, you know, withdraw without prejudice, so you get things in your favor, and then you resubmit the same application, things change along the way.
Yeah, and I guess I would-
Comment noted.
Put out there that the board did vote to accept the withdrawal and without prejudice, so.
Well, motions on the table.
Yeah. Yeah, so the motion is to-
Authorize Josh to insert the references to the dates of the hearings on the previous application.
Okay, yep, under item F.
Yep.
And, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
I gotta vote no. I can't vote in favor on that.
Of putting in the, putting in the previous-
Counsel, you think that that'll cover what I'm trying to do here?
I, yes, I do. The reason is that, number one, it's already in the earlier section, but it's also just a factual recitation that it already came in, that there were already hearing dates. It just makes sure that this section is consistent with the earlier section. And that's, I think that's the value of it.
Yeah.
So nobody selectively reads it and says, oh, wait a minute, you didn't say anything about those earlier ones.
Yeah, you know, because I don't want this come back and bite us later on. Like I said, too much shady stuff's been happening on this whole hearing. It's been hanging around too long, so I guess I'll have to go along with it.
So is that an aye vote?
Yeah, I'll give you an aye.
Aye, Julie Moran, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. Okay. Item G, character of the neighborhood. Any discussion?
Okay, hearing done, I'll make a motion, we accept section G.
And a second?
Just one comment. There is a blank left on section two about the homes directly abutting, the private wells. That information is actually in the record, so with your permission, we will take that from the report and insert it.
Yep.
Same for three.
Yep.
It's all the way down.
Yeah.
Yep. But we do have that information.
And we have, we have that information, and was there another one?
Uh-uh. Oh, okay.
True.
And the same with that, we have that information, again.
Three.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll fill that in.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Did I get a second on that?
You have a motion, a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. And the next item is item H, sense of place. Any discussion?
We could write a book in this section.
Mm-hmm.
A four-year discussion, that's-
Yeah, and a bunch of these, we could write a book.
Add a book.
Yeah.
We did write a book, in some respects.
Yeah. Any discussion?
Motion to accept section H.
A second?
Second.
All of those in favor? Mike?
He's thinking, he's reading.
He's reading.
Yeah.
You guys are really making this hard on me.
That wasn't the intent. We weren't trying to do that.
Yeah, vote aye.
Oh, okay. Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. The next item is item I, environmental justice communities. Any discussion?
No, I think this is an important section.
Agreed.
I think where we stand right now, there's a, it's hard to say no, I would think.
Come again with that, Sam, I didn't-
Being environmental justice community, I think we've done our fair share with 19 and 4, and I think six more permitted.
Oh, okay.
I think this is an important factor moving forward.
I agree with you 100%.
That being said, I move we accept section I.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
I'm sorry, Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. Item J, mitigation efforts insufficient or absent. Any discussion?
Again, you could write a book.
Madam Chairman, what's that one about? Let me just maybe we'll-
Well, why don't I leave, I can read, there are five headers. One, Farring Hill populations omitted from technical studies conducted by the applicant. Two, maintenance monitor schedule of catch basins, spillways, and vegetative barriers. Three, noise generated by transformers, inverters, and BES. Four, east side view abatement. And five, invasive species control.
Refers to evidence or lack of evidence, so, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? A motion?
Motion to accept section J, mitigation efforts.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jane-
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. Next item is item K, adverse effects that cannot be mitigated. And I can again go through a handful of headings here that I could read as well. Would that be helpful? Yes?
Madam Chairman, what I was going to suggest is, since saying adverse effects that cannot be mitigated, if it's a belief of a member or members that there are, number one, adverse effects, and number two, that those effects can't be mitigated, it might be worth just having a discussion as to what those effects are-
True.
And why they couldn't be mitigated. You know, I'm sure that's the sort of thing that the public might be interested in hearing.
Sure. So shall we go through each item?
Sure.
Okay. Item one, proximity to existing large ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system. The Farring Hill neighborhood is in close proximity to a large ground-mounted solar development consisting of 12.22 total acres and 6.8 of cleared forests and approximately 1,000 solar panels located at 22 Squirrel Island Road, approximately 1/10 of a mile from the Farring Hill project. The sensitivity of the Farring Hill residential area could now, which could now be sandwiched between two large industrial solar developments, will raise the risk level, denigrate the character and nature of the neighborhood with negative impacts on public, public health, safety, and/or welfare of the community, and contrary to applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw and Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 3. Discussion?
You're not going to read all five pages, are you? I mean, most people out there were here for almost every hearing.
Yeah, I know that.
And most of the concern are from the same people sitting out there.
a discussion, much as you just discussed right now, about, you know, the individual effects that are being referenced, so that somebody reviewing the tape in the future, you know, future generations, they have some sense of, you know, why you thought what you thought. It doesn't have to be a, you know, read the whole thing, just, you know, what's on your mind?
Sure.
Again, we've been here for four years talking about deforestation. Half, at least half the people out there have been here for almost, almost every meeting. I think Eric missed one. Uh, I think people are concerned, they should be. It's a sensitive area, you have a hundred acres that the town owns right next to it, downhill. Uh, I think everybody here is concerned with what happens if it's cleared. I know we have some mitigation proposed and approved, but as we said earlier, nobody knows. And it's a serious issue, and I think we're all concerned with it.
Yep.
I mean, that being said, we have four years of testimony...
Right.
A lot about the forestation, deforestation of the area.
And this is an effort to synthesize that.
I know, I mean, it's a great job. Again, you could have written a book.
Yeah.
Put everything together, these people have written, you have a book.
Yeah.
Yep.
Agree.
What's that?
I agree.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's, I think it's four pages of discussion of deforestation and the impacts of it, and the cumulative impacts to the community.
Yeah, and the cumulative impacts are the next item, so...
One of the, one bit of information we will provide, that so far we have lost five hundred thirty-eight acres of mature forest land to solar farms, and Farring Hill obviously will add a little over two, twenty acres to that.
And you have another one coming, that three seventy.
Correct.
A whole slew of them in the same neighborhood. And, you know, like the people have said over the years, I wouldn't want one behind me, one in front of me, and one down the street, I could walk to.
Right.
And that's, I think that's putting a lot of burden on that neighborhood.
Yes, agreed.
Yep.
Agreed.
And that's why they've been here every week for the last four years.
We've had, uh, people show us the results of the other one on Squirrel Island Road, what it has to the neighborhood and everything around it. Hasn't done any justice to it, that's for sure, and this is just going to add to the problem.
Like what's happened.
What happened was a... Oh, now you got, I can't, I can't say you can call them designated isolated wetlands, so now you get flooding you never did before. It's just a destruction of property, you know, it just, you know, it's going the wrong direction, it's not going the right way.
And you just can't make it pretty.
No.
You know, we, there's one across the street from where I walk the dog. We talk about certain plantings and all, unless you irrigate, you will have nothing. In this area...
It's still an industrial site.
You could dig a hole and you get sand. And, you know, I, again, I walk by this every couple of days. It's just, and the back of it, as Michael says, it goes back where there wasn't a wetland, now there's a wetland. So you, I guess you could say you're creating habitat and taking away at the same time on that particular one, but still, I mean, it's not pretty.
No.
And it can't be made pretty, you can fence it.
It seems like we're, we're learning as we go, and we're not doing any justice, so instead of making a good decision, I think we're going to make a defensive decision so we don't create something that we can't reverse. Good example is Love Canal. When they put that in place, it was supposed to be all good and everything was supposed to be perfect, and it turned out to be a total disaster. I think we have to think ahead versus thinking about the mighty dollar in greed, corporate greed, that's what it amounts to. And, you know, we get to live here whenever the time we got left.
And as we've discussed this over years, it's changed. You know, we were discussing it, just all of a sudden batteries.
Yeah.
That became the issue, all the other issues were secondary.
Well, and then PFAS.
And, yeah, yeah, everything we talked about for the last four years. And there are people actually moving away from solar, largest solar array in the country is being dismantled. Microsoft and another large company, maybe it's Google, are abandoning their plans for electric solar panels and going nuclear. One of them has bought Three Mile Island and started to rehabilitate, not using water, using, uh, potion, I can't even explain, I can't, I can't, it's crazy, this.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's ever-changing.
Yeah.
I mean, years ago, it was little solar panels, it was, yes, 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 nineteen times. Then batteries came along, and it was holy crap.
And when you talk batteries coming along, take it one step further, battery technology is changing all the time, and now it's battery storage. So in other words, we're going to make it someplace else to store it here. So it changes the whole scope of what it initially started as, it's totally different now.
Mike, what kind of batteries are going in here?
They have no idea. They have no idea, whatever the market is, whatever's cheapest.
We have not been told what, what's going in. And I, I honestly, I understand why we haven't been told, because the technology can change just what we're, yeah, so, just what we're up against.
Well, I'll put all our phones together, and they could explode.
Yeah.
Happened on Cranberry Highway. A toy store, lithium batteries just sitting there, exploded.
Yeah.
They don't know why, they don't know why.
So what's going to happen to that property now? Is that property going to be condemned?
No, don't know.
Don't know. Um, you know, I, I can't sleep at night in favor, you know, going in favor with something like this, that someday down the road, somebody's dream or whatever, the whole life savings gone, because somebody made a bad decision, a bad mistake, overseen something, just because to make somebody happy, to make a lot of money. Money's not everything, I guess. I think, you know, as I get older, I appreciate some of the simpler things more than I did before.
Yeah.
Funny how it works.
I won't say no more, I won't, you know. You can relate to that.
I'll say one last...
Sadly, I can't.
I agree with everything, no, almost everything that was presented over the last four years. The one thing that scares me is the batteries. There have been problems all over the world. I'm sitting here, I think this is my sixth year up here, and when it blows up, if it blows up, I won't be here, I'll be long gone. These are twenty-five-year programs. I won't be here.
But Sam, Sam, what's wrong with the batteries? No, seriously, what's wrong with the batteries?
They've exploded, burned all over the year, they polluted, the smoke...
Thermal runaway, there's a whole body of, in which we've, we have in the record some of the studies.
And some of the fires that have started around the country.
Yeah.
They've been documented.
Around the world.
They're now starting to, for a long time, there wasn't a database, they now have a database, it's kind of tracking this.
If you remember back, Sam, let's go back a couple of years, when batteries, they first start talking batteries, and we were told, what do you do for fire prevention? That's something that we're really concerned about, let it burn.
It can't, tore them out.
The air we breathe, if you put water on it, you've got millions of gallons of water goes in the ground. I've got well water, what do I do? Am I going to buy water, water? We've got some of the best water in the state.
You know, I don't want to be dead horse, but a different program, Zero Twenty-Five, you can walk to three active wells. I mean, literally, five minutes you walk to one, another ten, another one, another one.
Yeah.
It affects not us, but all the people that are on the aquifer. And again, that, this is not specifically that issue on this particular site, but everybody around it is worried about the water. I would be too.
Sure.
Worried about, worried about the riverbank. Anyway, I'm seeing a lot of the same, same things I said over the last four years.
Thanks for educating me.
So what's listed here is these adverse effects that can't be mitigated, and so we're voting on what's, what's written here and our findings of fact, so...
Yeah. From the record, everything I've heard of for the last four years, everything's not here, can't be.
Yeah.
And it's a great try. Okay, that all being said, I would approve section K.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. The next item is I, or, excuse me, L.
L.
Cumulative impact.
Yep.
That's what we've been talking about for the last ten minutes.
Yes, yep.
Discussion?
Make a motion, we accept section L.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I guess we could be the dead horse if we get into that too, but...
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. And the last item is N, consistency with Wareham master plan. Any discussion?
The master plan, what is that? Isn't that a document, is, it's a guide, or as you say, the world of people? Every time they write one, I think every five years, they're supposed to rewrite it. It's probably the, the document with the most dust in the library.
And then you just, then you ignore it, the next five years.
They refer to it as the master plan, it's like referring to, my mother-in-law's my best friend. You know, you refer to it as that, and you try to put it aside and forget about it. I like my mother-in-law, believe me.
Good thing. Um, so this is referenced in the zoning bylaws, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
That it should be referred to, so...
Motion to approve section, what is it, N, last one?
N, N.
N, yep. Second, okay.
All in favor? Discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So, that gets us through the findings of fact document, um, and then we need to go on to...
Conditions of approval?
Yes, the conditions of approval, um...
Don't you think that's premature?
Well, depending on how it goes, I think we need to...
Yeah, it depends on how the vote goes.
Yep.
So we could do it after the vote, if you'd like?
Why do that?
Right, why do it if, depending on the vote?
It makes no difference.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm happy to put that aside for now. Um, so, I guess we're on to...
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Questions? Do we conclude that part?
I think after four years, we've said everything we needed to say, heard everything we needed to hear. I told Mike King I was ready to vote.
That was quite a few chairmans ago.
Okay.
Don't look at me.
So, I guess that we are at the point where we're ready to take a vote.
Yeah.
And as Carl put out there, um, he wanted us to state our reasons for our vote at the time of our vote. Um, so, I was thinking that I might lead this, if that's okay with everybody.
Do what?
I'm going to lead the vote.
Oh, okay.
You need a motion first.
We do need a motion, we do need a motion first. We have a motion. Is that your motion?
No.
No, okay, we need...
Don't look at me.
Yeah, okay, we need, I'd entertain a motion to approve the project, and I say that with making no push in any direction or...
For discussion purposes.
Or other. Um, I would like the, the motion to be to approve so that we don't have any double negative confusion.
Right.
If that comes up, so...
Right. So you'd like a motion?
I'd like a motion.
A motion to approve the project without, you know, any discussion, nothing to do with discussion or deliberation or anything?
Would anybody like discussion before that? I get the impression, from this end of the table, no. Would you like some discussion before we make that motion?
Who are you going to get to second?
I don't know.
Second? Is that a second?
The chair can.
I can, I can second it. I'll second it.
Okay.
So, all right. Any more discussion? No, okay.
Once the motion is made, all discussion ends.
Okay. So, I'm going to reference the Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty, Section Three. No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably...
Can I, um, and I, I look to counsel, just to clarify, so what we, do we need to say anything further before Jane proceeds?
Um, no. Really, you've adopted a set of factual findings already, so it's just a question of what the board decides to make of those facts that is already found. Um, you've got a motion to approve for discussion purposes, you have a second for discussion purposes. Now's the point where you tell the public how you might vote and why. It can be as detailed as you want it, but it should at least in some fashion refer to the findings of fact that you've already voted. You know, I'm voting in such and such a way because of the findings of fact that we voted, which were, you know, and summarized, something like that.
Does this need to be a preamble to our actual vote?
No, you're just, you're just going to, well, preamble, that sounds kind of formal. It's, it's just a discussion as to, before you vote, it's a, it's a preview of how you might vote and why.
And then you vote.
And then you vote, because the public is going to want to know, well, they're going to be very curious about how you're going to vote, the applicant's going to be very curious about how you're going to vote, and then people are going to want to know why you're, why you're thinking about voting in that particular way. And here's your chance to say it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Was there a second on Julie's motion to...
This isn't a public hearing.
I understand that.
Thank you. Carry on.
Motion to, I made the motion, and it was second, yeah, Jane seconded.
I seconded, yeah, yeah. Shall I proceed? Um, so, I just wanted to start off with Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty, Section Three, that says no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public safety, public health, safety, and it says or, welfare. So that gives a fair amount of latitude, given that it is an or, so it really means...
Any one of the three.
It can be any one of the three, but it also states that the states...
Could be all three.
It could be all three, but it could also be just one. It also states that the state is in favor of, of solar energy. Um, I believe that, I'm going to really summarize what I've got here for my reasons, but I think... You know, "I'm voting in such and such a way because of the findings of fact that we voted," which were, you know, and summarized, something like that.
Does this need to be a preamble to our actual vote?
No, you're just, you're just gonna, well, preamble, that sounds kind of formal. It's, it's just a discussion as to, before you vote, it's a preview of how you might vote and why.
And then you vote.
And then you vote. Because the public is gonna wanna know, well, they're gonna be very curious about how you're gonna vote. The applicant's gonna be very curious about how you're gonna vote. And then people are gonna wanna know why you're, why you're thinking about voting in that particular way. And here's your chance to say it.
Yeah?
Yep.
Was there a second on Julie's motion to?
This isn't a public hearing.
I understand that.
Thank you. Carry on.
Motion to, I made the motion, and it was second, yeah, Jane seconded it.
I seconded it, yeah.
Yeah.
Shall I proceed? So, I just wanted to start off with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 3, that says, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unnecessarily regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public safety, public health, safety," and it says, "or," welfare. So, that gives a fair amount of latitude, given that it is an "or." So, it really means.
Any one of the three.
It can be any one of the three, but it also states that the states.
Could be all three.
It could be all three, but it could also be just one. It also states that the state is in favor of, of solar energy. I believe that, I'm gonna really summarize what I've got here for my reasons, but I think that, let's start out with the bylaws and the general provisions. I don't know how clearly I'm gonna be able to summarize this. So I think that the best is actually a big threat. I think that that's, that is, and that goes to health and safety for sure. I think that it doesn't conserve the values of the properties that are adjoining. I think that, I think there was a question about special permit, and I think that this project should, I think that special permit does apply to this project. And I think that it applies on a number of different fronts. It applies on the clearing of the land. It applies on, there was phasing, I know, that was put into place, but the phasing is far more aggressive than what the bylaw asks for, and the bylaw asks for a special permit to be sought for clearing land at such an aggressive rate, or anything beyond what the, what the bylaw asked for. Asked for 50,000 square feet over 36 months, so that would put this project into taking up to 51 years at the size of it. And there's, there's an item about large areas, large projects that are over, I believe it was 21, was it 20 acres or 30 acres? Over 30 acres. And this project, it sits on a, on a property that is over 30 acres, so that is another special permit item. And I think that the clear cutting of the forest is not advantageous to anybody in the neighborhood. I think that it is, I think the water control is an issue. I think that collecting it in the infiltration basins is, it just, it so redirects the, the travel of water across that site that it may pose some serious problems. So, I think primarily the appropriateness of putting this project in this neighborhood that is established is not a good idea, and I'm going to put my vote as a nay.
Okay. Shall I, as vice chair, acting vice chair, continue? Let me start if I could, get my glasses on, sorry. "I feel it's important to preface my remarks tonight with a statement as to my personal commitment to supporting the Commonwealth's Clean Energy Program, including reducing our dependency on fossil fuels and other related energy sources, and supporting the audacious goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by at least 80% below 1990 levels by 2050. Facilities such as large solar installations, if properly sighted, designed, operated, and monitored, can aid in that process. As a town, Wareham has earned the Green Community designation. It's really demonstrated its commitment to green energy initiatives, including our Massachusetts policy supporting solar energy. The Green Communities Program, under the aegis of Mass General Law's Chapter 25, Base, Section 10, requires that, among other initiatives, to allow us to, to allow as-of-right sighting of renewable or alternative energy generating facilities in designated locations, again, subject to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So in furtherance of that designation, the town adopted Article 5 of the zoning bylaws entitled Solar Generation, including Section 1590 in the 2019 versions of the zoning bylaws, which is subject to the zoning freeze we are using. And what it states, I think, is important to point out, "The purpose of this bylaw is to encourage the use of solar energy generation facilities in prior for the construction and operation of ground-mounted solar energy facilities, and to provide standards for placement, design, construction, monitoring, modification, and removal of large ground-mounted solar energy facilities that address public safety, minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources of the town. Witness Wareham's commitment, we now, since 2018, have by all, by most counts, about 27 large ground-mounted solar developments throughout the town, have been either approved or are currently pending. These projects cover hundreds of acres, and have resulted in the clear-cutting based on the planning office's calculations of 533 acres of mature forest. Many are contingent, contingent also to environmental justice communities. This is not a surprise, because we have eight between Wareham and Carver. As our Secretary of the Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Secretary Tepper has mentioned, in the first-of-its-kind release Environmental Justice Survey, at the heart of our climate change efforts is the environmental justice communities, and really looking at the proliferation of projects and making sure that they are being looked at relative to those communities who have always been the last ones to be considered when projects, development, pollution, all the issues that can come with large industrial developments arise. The environmental risk, however, is Wareham's and Wareham's alone. We do, Wareham does not afford a benefit particular to Wareham, but is meant to address a statewide priority. We support the state, but has come to Wareham's borders to execute on this. Plymouth County, I'm not sure if people know, it's in the record, is one of the three counties with the most industrial solar facilities. Wareham contributes heavily to this high number. Concentrated development in a few areas of the state localizes and concentrates the environmental consequence and risk with impacts on environmental resources, water supply, wetlands, private wells, and septic systems, of which we have dozens in this neighborhood, and groundwater. The applicable law in precedent, 592.1 of the zoning bylaws, compliance with laws, ordinance, and regulations provide, "The construction and operation of large ground-mounted solar energy facilities shall be consistent with all applicable local, state, and federal requirements, including limited to all applicable safety, construction, electrical, and communication requirements." That is reflected, much of that is reflected in our local law that relates to this project. Article 1, Purpose, Article 5, Solar Generation, Article 14, Special Permit, and Article 5, Site Plan Review, which includes language that I think is important to this project. Permitted special permits to act in a way to support suitable development which will not result in a detriment to the neighborhood or the environment, that's Section 1510. Protection of environmental features of the site and adjacent areas, 1510.4, and that under the Special Section 1461 of the zoning bylaws. "The Board of Appeals, or Planning Board, depending on who is, who is the permit granting authority, shall not approve any application for a special permit unless it finds that in its judgment, all, emphasis added, of the following conditions are met. It then proceeds to list six conditions, the first of which, relevant here, along with many of the others that are in my materials, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood." So, given the foregoing, I believe, I find that I believe that the project is inconsistent with the zoning bylaws and the applicable Commonwealth law, and that the Planning Board through this application is subject to Section 590 of the bylaws. And also, I want to touch on state law, because I feel that many of the protections that are included in our zoning bylaw are integrated into Chapter 48, Section 3, the so-called Dover Amendment, which provides, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or reasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare." Emphasis added on necessary, public health, safety, or welfare. "Municipalities do maintain their discretion to reasonably restrict the magnitude and placement of solar energy system." This statutory language in this paragraph nine has been construed to provide municipalities with more flexibility compared to other protections in that same section for education, religion, and childcare. Thus, there is a limited, limit placed on the Planning Board's authority to review proposed solar application, except where necessary to protect health, safety, or welfare. I'll just skip to why, the aspects of this project that I feel adversely are not consistent with health, safety, and welfare, and therefore the necessity of protecting it is in fact here. The project's adverse impact on natural and working lands, clearing cutting 20 acres of mature forest, understory shrubs, destruction wildlife, creating a loss in perpetuity of water management, cooling, and loss of stored carbon, carbon to the atmosphere, as well as the loss of future carbon sequestration, I believe is real and is something that this project would, would impact. The potential impacts on local health and climate of the community, this is the welfare of the entire community, of deforestation, carbon release, and reduced carbon absorption. Installing 7,300, installing 7,300 solar panels, of which we have minimal information to assess their impact. Installing a best system of unknown size chemical components with scan information about maintenance and monitoring, again, raises the risk to the community, and particularly to that neighborhood, as we watch more water events, more drought events, that could really exacerbate any type of accident at the, at the site. The risk of fire, release of toxic gas and particulate matter, firefighting water flows, as was mentioned earlier. And again, and this is in a site that has 66 acres of conservation area, biodiversity, and homeowners with vulnerable private services, private wells, private sewer systems, where no determination has, determination has been made of the depth of the wells. So we really don't know if we have a water, water event, what it might do to the wells. Again, pollution, erosion, and sediment controls, lack of consistent sediment controls, pollution, erosion concerns. Runoff from clear-cutting, clear-cutting is not the same as, as planting a meadow. When you clear-cut, you have a very different outcome. I know some limited mitigation can be done by planting a meadow, in my opinion. The runoff from clear-cutting and all cannot necessarily automatically be mitigated with meadows or with catch basins. And then concern about, as panels, best system ages, degradation of panels, problems, concerns about best fires, best accidents, best degradation. And then lack of a baseline and ongoing water quality test. We did a lot of testing on the water volume, we didn't do a lot of testing on the water quality that may result from any runoff. So, I think that those are, and then the last one, I think, is approval of this project with the existing Squirrel Island solar development, really sandwiches this between two very large solar developments. I don't think that that is consistent with our zoning bylaws about protecting the neighborhood and the, and the larger community. And then the last one is the cumulative impact. I think that this town has done an amazing, has, has, has really expressed its commitment to clean energy by approving, reviewing with an open mind all, all projects, approving those that they feel do fit within the zoning bylaws in 48, Section 3, and then come to conclusions about each one in a different way. I feel that the Planning Board has a sound basis to reject this application out of the zoning bylaws and governing Massachusetts law, supported by the records. It is necessary to protect public health, safety, and/or welfare, as outlined in the Fairing Hill project fails to meet critical safety, environmental, and legal standards. Thank you.
I agree with what she said.
So your, so your vote?
So my vote is nay. No.
First, I'd like to thank you all for what you've done, Kathy, Nancy, Eric. I mean, you've done a lot of work, you've kept us honest, you've found little things here and there that we overlooked. I appreciate that, and all the time you spent here. You guys were a big help. We've been here for four years discussing this, I think we've done our job. We've looked at every possible angle we could to try to find out the facts and what she just said.
Jane seconded.
I was told I had to give reasons. Health, safety, and welfare. We, we had an election here, I think there were six candidates, all six candidates said, "I'll do my best to stop the solar." They didn't really know the law at the time. Health, we have so many issues that are health-related, that are in the facts, and that we've heard over the last four years. Safety, we've heard of accidents, and, and, well, how does it affect the battery sitting on the table? That could be a danger factor. And we're gonna have this huge facility that's about a billion of these things, so I'm worried about the safety. Welfare, I asked Alexa, "What does welfare mean?" And what she told me was, "That's not my welfare. It's not why I came to town for, it's not what I think is good for me, or good for what, I've heard a lot of you people." So, I'm no surprise, I'm voting against the package.
So your vote is nay?
Me?
You.
I'm a person of very few words.
We know that.
As I, I have to take your thunder. You probably said everything I would've said plus, and simplicity, common sense, everything else, and of course, I can't justify putting another solar field in, especially over in Fairing Hill. Leave it alone, leave it the way it is. Some people aren't gonna be happy. Hey, life is tough. Let's move on. I think the people, like you said, Sam, they've been here every meeting. We've been here a long time ourselves. It's been an education for all of us, and smarter people make better decisions. And I think that's what we did. And I think our board, cut this one. No.
So your vote is?
He just said, no.
He did, okay, sorry.
I'd like to also thank the board for hard, the hard work you all done, especially you, I guess.
Oh, Jane.
Way back, I don't know if it's Eric, somebody said, "You don't get paid enough." I said, "We don't get paid at all." And, you know, it's not just sitting here. We have meetings with our attorney, we have meetings with applicants to try to sort out what they can do to make it work. We have meetings, site, site visits, and it's a lot of work. And I think we've done our job, and I think that the boards worked real hard to get to this point, and we went through everything we could to find out what we thought and believed was right for the town, and I think the committee did an awesome job, as well as council.
I'd like to ask John, is Carl on by any chance?
No.
Okay. He wasn't sure if he would have connectivity, so.
In the leadership of Carl.
Yes, the leadership of Carl.
Who's sat for the last two years and.
No, Carl's done an amazing job.
Yeah.
I just, been a one-man planning board, so.
Yeah.
We need to call for a vote.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to.
Vote?
Vote.
To deny?
To deny.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Uh, geez, I'm gonna say aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
No, I'm not voting. Madam Chairman, the, the original motion on the table was to approve.
Correct.
So really what you've done here is you've defeated that motion by a zero to four vote. I'm going to suggest, in view of the comments, a new motion, which if the board agrees with it, someone could simply say, "So moved," and then second it, and then you could vote on it. And this is what I've just written out. "I move that the Planning Board deny the application, and that the board incorporate the reasons expressed in discussion under the prior motion, and to incorporate the findings of fact previously voted as reasons."
So moved.
Can I make, can I make one amendment to your motion? For site plan review special permit.
Very good.
Okay. So did you move?
Hmm?
So moved?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm not voting.
No, no, we're, we're clear here.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
You're done.
Let's, next item.
Let's move forward.
Okay.
What's next? What's next?
New business.
New business, yeah. Josh, you had some new business.
I do. I do. Just give me a moment to share my screen here. Josh has something.
Waiting for Josh to pull something up.
Actually, Mike, you might be able to walk me through some of this one. So, back in the early 2000s, the Planning Board had approved Beaver Path subdivision off of Gulf Road. It was a four-lot buildable subdivision with an additional lot that was unbuildable towards the end of the cul-de-sac, which is maybe less than a majority wetland, but it really makes the lot unbuildable.
Brad Bouchon.
What?
Brad Bouchon's project.
Bill Bouchon.
Bill Bouchon, I'm sorry.
Amazing, Mike, what a memory.
That fifth lot was supposed to be drainage area.
Yep, and I think it remains that way today as well, but ultimately, it's unbuildable for a house lot. Over the years, the Planning Board has released the built lots, and today, what we have is a incomplete approval of the subdivision, only because the final lot was never brought forward for a lot release.
Homeowners Association was never formed. Okay. Lots were trained, well, it was supposed to happen on conditions on that project. Lots were conveyed without a homeowners' association being formed, and I think, at the time, two of the lots, or three, the majority was a landowner or the developer. And he tried strong-arming the people that lived there to sign a homeowners' association after some houses already changed hands twice. And it never got approved. I think we still have money in the queue on that one.
No, you guys already released all the funds for it, and that's why I'm bringing it up tonight. It's ultimately a completed subdivision. There's no further action that you could take on it, other than, you know, releasing this final lot and calling it complete. Mike, you might be able to speak more to this, when it was, when it went in front of the Planning Board, I believe, was it an old horse track or something?
No, it was a horse farm.
A horse farm, so at the entrance of Beaver Path, they actually have this carriage house with one of the old carriages preserved inside of it. That was actually one of the conditions of the approval.
Yes, it was supposed to stay here, yes.
So I found that to be really interesting. So, so here, this is just an aerial view of the site plan that I showed you guys. It's a little hard to see. Jared, could you just flip off one of those light switches for me? The other one. Thank you. So the subdivision here, this house existed prior to...
That's right, that's the last stable, yeah.
Yep, and then one, two, three, and four were constructed. So the final lot, being this lot in the back, is the only one remaining for a release. And what I'm asking the board to do tonight is just vote to release that lot. There are some plans for it that I won't divulge in public hearing, but it's not to be built.
Oh, so it's not to be built on?
Right, it will not be built on.
Okay.
It's going to be a covenant?
Yeah, I was going to say covenant, recorded, plan, okay.
I'm sure that will move forward.
Okay.
I thought technically I may be wrong on this, Council. It should be put on the print as a parcel, not a lot.
Just not buildable.
Yeah. Apostles, apostles are pieces of land that isn't designated as being buildable. When you put a lot on there, what'll happen in this town, has happened in the past, somebody's going to show up at the town hall and says, "I have a lot," it says "lot" on it, and there'll be a house on it, because we got a lot of sleaze bags in this town. They've done that stuff all the time. We learned that from Holy Cross, we used to take seminars once a year.
My alma mater.
A great place. And we learned a lot of the apostles. Another one is subdivisions, no further subdivision in perpetuity. John Churcher refers to that all the time, because he remembers me saying that. They hate that. Perpetuity means ever.
Yeah, forever.
End of story. It's little things like that that slip between the cracks, and if you don't, you get the carpetbaggers I'm referring to, these bums in general, they're coming, they're going to jam it up, the dark side, before you know it. And like I said...
Josh, does it have a legend on non-buildable? I can't see it from here.
So it does not contain a legend that it's not buildable, but I can give the board some surety that it probably can't be buildable. If you reference this line here, this is the drainage easement that runs through maybe the first quarter of the lot. And then what you have here is a jurisdictional IVW, so an isolated wetland. The Concom holds control over those, and they have a 30-foot no-activity zone for that. So, you know, just judging by those two, it's unlikely that you could ever get a driveway even past either one of these. And then moving forward, the 100-foot buffer kind of does this, creates a little upland here. The town has rules that say you have to get your septic system 150 feet away from a wetland, so it's unlikely they could ever put a septic here as well. But I'm...
But on the original plan, the original decision, did it mention non-buildable? So you said there'll be a covenant recorded that will say that at the registry? I mean, to Mike's point, five years from now.
Only way that thing's going to go, only way we're going to sign that off, is that lot's going to go away, and it's going to be parcel put on there, because I can remember back on that, that lot was being swapped off as a buildable lot, to somebody that did some work in there, and of course, it reverted back to the original guy.
Covenant.
Yep.
Josh, I think, since the developers aren't going to be able to do anything, I think a covenant.
Yeah. I think maybe the representatives of the land trust can maybe inform the board, maybe
where I won't intervene.
Kathy Papalardo, K-A-T-H-Y-P-A-P-P-A-L-A-R-D-O, President of the Wareham Land Trust.
And Nancy McHale, Nancy, N-A-C-Y-M-C-H-A-L-E, Treasurer of the Wareham Land Trust.
This property has come to us, we went out to look at it, and I don't remember the year that it was, and we took a walk, site walk, we looked at it. It probably is not developable. It was getting, we were looking at it not to develop it. We were looking at it because of its location near some very sensitive wetlands, and the idea of keeping that land open, and there's a portion of, I believe it's Patterson Brook, running through the back end of that. There's also that whole wet area that's probably a vernal, maybe a vernal pool, it's definitely a swamp.
Right on the side over there, used to be a cranberry bog. If you notice, there's a building that's built within 25 feet of the brook. That was constructed, when they started this project, it was another one of them deals that things happen underneath the, I don't know, slip it under the carpet. And the building was built, you was notified, and nothing was done, and the building's still there to this day, within 25 foot of that brook.
We're in the process of doing the due diligence, and it was very tricky to find out, does this HOA still exist?
Was never formed.
And it's hard to find the paperwork to it, and then Alex, Alexandra Zolo, our executive director, when she was digging through, then she had come up and found this potential covenant, or whatever it is, and had been in touch with Josh, if he could find out, because we're doing this due diligence to make sure everything is clear on this, before we go too much further into this, you know?
So is the land trust looking to acquire this?
Acquire it.
Okay.
Yes, but not to build on it.
Yeah, no, no, well, the land trust is...
You'd put a covenant on it.
Right, the land trust isn't in the business of building, so.
That would take care of it.
Yeah, yeah, we would do that.
Yeah, if they bought it, otherwise.
If they bought.
Yeah, yeah.
If we acquire it.
Yes.
Do you have a PNS?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you have a PNS?
We have a letter from the current owner, who is actually willing to donate it to us.
Even better, so acquire it is where that was going.
Did you say yes?
It was, it was...
But you gotta do your due diligence. You have to do our due diligence, so we don't inherit, you know, super cleanup fund.
Right, right, right.
It was originally on the market as a buildable lot, and after conversation with the owner, et cetera, et cetera, this is where we landed, because they know it's not a buildable lot. So we need to do all of our due diligence, of which this is the big part.
Josh, what do you want us to do?
Confirmation vote that this final lot is released from the original subdivision, and what I'll do is I'll write a memo for the board to sign, and we can have the lay-in owner recorded, and that will essentially clear the title for the land.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion?
So moved, no.
No.
Second?
No discussion?
Oh, you did? Good, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, this speaks to the point of dotting your i's and crossing your t's.
Sure.
And having the final documentation for all this stuff. So we appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Emphasize, all the efforts, all the efforts.
And sorry for my vagueness, I didn't want to go throwing information out there.
That's okay, that's okay, that is not accurate, or, yeah, right, right.
That's what happens when you're the new guy in town.
Well...
Yeah.
So I need a motion.
I would like to make a statement that for the next meeting, we, at least I have an updated list of 53 Gs, please. Okay, make a motion, adjourn.
Second?
Aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Can we stop spelling?